Good morning and welcome to the Glendale City Council First Fiscal Year 2021-22 Budget Study Session being called to order on April 27, 2021 at 9:16. Due to the evolving situation with COVID-19, novel coronavirus, and health recommendations from the L.A. County Health Department, the Glendale City Council Meeting/Study Session will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing adjust requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. Public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. The meeting can be viewed on Charter Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Or you can stream online at www.glendaleca.gov and go to the public meeting portal. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting these questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person during this meeting. Thank you. And with that, may we have roll call Mr. Jimian?
Councilmember Ogjaniyan.
President.
Brotman.
Here.
Kusakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Mayor.
Here. Thank you. And what's next?
The agenda for the Tuesday, April 27, 2021, Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on April 21, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay. Mr. Galanian, are you there?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
It's very difficult. I'm sorry, but it's very difficult to hear those of you in the chamber.
Can you? How about now?
That's better.
This is as close as I can get to the microphone. Good morning, Mayor Devine and members of council. Today, we kick off this year's budget review season that spans over seven study sessions. This morning, we will cover fiscal year 2021, the current fiscal year, year-end budget update, next year's, that is fiscal year 2122, general fund budget, as well as the forecast for the next five years. For next year, as expected, you will see a significant drop in revenue due to the economic impact of the pandemic. But the American Rescue Plan Act was enacted for this exact reason, to cover the loss of revenue, amongst other things. And you will see some information on that, although the full guidelines have not been released yet. The study sessions will also include four sessions dedicated to deep dive look at every department's budget, as well as some major accomplishments and planned initiatives for next year. I know it's going to take up a lot of your time, but as council has noted previously, and I agree, that it's important for the public to see the council allocated funds and how they're being used based on your priorities. Finally, I want to acknowledge our extraordinary budget team for their hard work and dedication, as well as all the department heads and their budget liaisons who have put in a tremendous amount of time and effort, bringing us to this point that started back in February. This year, you will also notice a visually different style and format for the presentations that I'm particularly pleased to see that our team has enacted that change. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle Flynn, our Director of Finance, for the presentations and questions at the end of each slide, as we have decided. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of council. Thank you, Mr. Galanian. It's my pleasure this morning to present to you our first of seven budget study sessions this season. As the PowerPoint comes up, I'll quickly run through our agenda for today. We have an update for you for this current fiscal year. The last update we provided to city council was on March 2, where we provided the mid-year update. This update today will give you the general fund numbers, actuals through February 28. We have expenditures, as well as receipts recorded through that date, as well as an updated year-end projection. After that, we will officially start off fiscal year 2122, looking at the proposed general fund budget, our five-year forecast. We'll talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds, as well as some minor changes in our citywide fee schedule. Lastly, we'll take a look at our upcoming budget calendar that will span the rest of about another month or so until adoption on June 8. So please feel free to ask questions along the way if you like. I'll try to pause at the end of every slide, as we talked about, and otherwise, we can take them at the end as well. So jumping into our fiscal year 2021, current fiscal year update on general fund revenues, we have received approximately $116.5 million, or almost 53% of our revised budget for our revenues. This does exclude Measure S revenues. We are looking very good on property tax, sales tax, as well as utility users' tax. According to our revised projections, those are coming in very close to what we are projecting for year-end. Our transient occupancy taxes are still struggling a little. This is the slowest sector to recover through the pandemic, so we are seeing slight improvement, although it is still very slow recovery. We're hoping to meet the projection by the end of the fiscal year, as long as things remain on the upswing. November and December revenues were not so great, but January and February are a little bit better. So we're hopeful that the remainder of the year will continue on that trend. The revenue categories, as you are used to seeing, are on Slide 5, and you can see that we are trending fairly well on the majority of our revenue categories. And this is in comparison to our revised budget from Quarter 2, which is the third column over. Actuals as of February 28, at the bottom there, you see the $116.5 million, or almost 53%. We did record our sales tax receipts for the month that we received in the month of March, because those are for January receipts. So that number of $25.5 million does reflect through January.
Just a second, Michelle.
Sure.
If you could just briefly, yeah, just briefly pause, if you could, after each slide, just in case.
Thanks.
Yeah, okay, sir. So you say the revised budget for Q2 is $220, $220 million. So you're not, you're not doing a Q3 revision. You're gonna stick with that, and still, your best estimate is that we end the year at 220?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Brotman, yes, that is correct. We are not making any more revenue revisions at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Go on.
Okay. On Slide 6, we will start off a little bit on the general fund expenditures. We've recorded approximately $151.5 million, or a little over 64% of the total revised budget. Again, this does not include Measure S expenditures. The revised budget for general fund expenditures includes some budget carryovers from the previous fiscal year, as well as the first quarter departmental budget reductions, and some other small adjustments that were taken to council during the year. Total revised budget for the general fund is $238,108,000, slightly down from what we adopted last year. So at the mid-year report, we provided council with what we projected our year-end savings on the expenditure side would look like. Since we now have a little bit more time since that report, we went back and redid some numbers. We have more information by which to do an updated projection for you. So you'll see on this chart that we had the initial revised, the initial projected year-end savings of $5.162 million. That was reported to council at the mid-year report in March. And now, our revision for mid-year, I'm sorry, for year-end budget savings is just under $6.6 million. The largest change here is in our salaries and benefit category, where we are seeing additional vacancies to help ease the savings there. So we are seeing a little bit more that we can likely achieve in that category. So overall, we have almost $6.6 million that we're projecting to be able to save out of the expenditure budget for this fiscal year.
Questions?
And I should add that this, I'm sorry, I should add that on top of this salaries and benefit savings is on top of the $5 million vacancy savings that we already have incorporated into the budget.
So does the 1.6 include the 5 million?
No, this is on top of.
On top of that?
Yes.
Why the jump from 0.3 to 1.6?
Generally, at the end of the fiscal year, I'm sorry, at the calendar year, we have additional retirements or people leaving. So we, I think we had more vacancies, basically, that came up, as well as just updated numbers that we can do a better projection at this point.
And also, as a result of the continuous hiring freeze that we have in place.
Okay. Moving on to Slide 8, these are our major expenditure categories of salaries and benefits, maintenance and operations, capital outlay, as well as transfers out for the general fund. You can see where all of those are trending according to our revised budget. That shows you the $151.5 million, or 64% of the budget expended. The GSA loan repayment is a transfer out there of $1.6 million. That's already recorded. And then, we are included the projected year-end savings number of almost $6.6 million towards the bottom there, under the revised column. So our total expenditures projected for the end of the year are trending right around $231.5 million.
Michelle, can you please explain the GSA loan payment for the public?
Oh, yes. So the GSA loan repayment is the payment that's received from the state for the repayment from redevelopment loan that was made back from the general fund when redevelopment started. So this is one installment that we received this year. And this comes out of reserves. We had to change how we record it, according to our auditors last year. So this is not, no longer a cash, well, the cash comes in, but it comes out of our reserves when we record it, which is why it's below the line. It's a resource for us.
Hearing no questions, continue.
Okay. On Slide 9, this is a recap for the general fund for fiscal year 2021. And if you look at the very far right-hand column on the total projected, you'll see our total resources projected, which includes revenues, the loan repayment, as well as a little use of Economic Development Fund balance. Total there is $229 million. And then, the appropriations total is $230.7 million. This includes, we pull the carryovers out, and we do the transfer over, the 20% transfer over to the low and moderate housing fund. So our updated net use of fund balance is just over $1.7 million. When we adopted the budget last year, the projected use of fund balance was almost $4.8 million. So we did receive the $2.5 million in CARES Act money, so that did help our revenues a little bit, as well as some savings in the departmental cutbacks that they did. So we do have a little bit better year-end picture at this point of a deficit of $1.7 million.
That's just over $3 million difference.
Yes. Okay. And moving on to Slide 10, as we look at our projected year-end fund balance numbers, with the carryovers incorporated, as well as the use of fund balance of $1.7 million, are projected.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Can you go back to the previous slide? Okay. Where did you choose that, that $2.5 million that we got?
Madam Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Ogjaniyan, the $2.5 million is incorporated into the resources. If I go back a few slides for you, on Slide 5, you'll see it in the category for revenue from other agencies. The total there received is $2.7 million, so the $2.5 is part of that. I'm sorry, the budget is $2.7, the actuals received is a little over $2.5. That's where we've recorded that revenue.
Revenue from other agencies, is that where it reflects?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's in our total line, our total bottom-line revenues for the year.
I see.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So back to Slide 10, on our year-end projection for fund balance. We're looking at an ending fund balance for this fiscal year of $79,417,000, or about 33.3% of the general fund budget. And if you recall, council's policy is a target of 35% and a floor of 25%. So this chart on Slide 11 shows you in a graph and bar chart where our revenue, our ending fund balance was at June 30 of 2020, and where we're projecting to end this current fiscal year, well within the policy threshold.
Excuse me. I have a question.
Go ahead.
And it says, under those columns, it says June 30, 2020, then it says July 1, 2020? I mean, the day, the next day?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember Ogjaniyan, yes, that difference is the carryovers that we utilize the previous year's ending fund balance to fund the carryovers that we do into the next fiscal year. So, yes, it is, it's a one-day difference, but that's just how we record it.
That's a $760,000 difference.
Correct.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. That wraps up the current fiscal year, year-end update. So officially, we will start the discussion for our proposed budget for the general fund for next fiscal year, fiscal year 2122. Slide 13, just to give you some background on some of our general fund revenue assumptions. Sales tax has been a big factor for us, obviously with the economic impacts from the pandemic. We are still seeing some tracking up of revenues from sales tax, which is a good thing. There are, all indications are showing that it's, that the revenues are going to be increasing. Our consultants from HDL have indicated that as well. The L.A. area is coming out of the pandemic and is trying to resume some normalcy of operations amongst stores, as well as restaurants. So that's all a positive. Online sales do continue to be a strong sales tax revenue for us, and we still are not sure what that's going to look like going forward, and what consumer habits will be, whether or not they will be going to stores again, or doing shopping online. And in a couple of slides, we'll look at some of the impacts of online versus brick-and-mortar businesses. Our transient occupancy taxes, as I've mentioned to you pretty much all year long, we are seeing that industry very slow to recover. It is tracking up slightly, not as much as we would have liked to by now, and I'm sure the hotels feel the same way. Our estimates are about 65% to 75% of normal occupancy. Some additional assumptions, while we have some traffic fines that have decreased as a result of the pandemic, because more people are at home, not as much on the road, we're holding steady with the same revenue estimates as we had for this current fiscal year going into next year. Charges for services, we are seeing a modest increase next fiscal year due to some facilities being able to open up, and more programs for the city being offered to our residents and community. Limited capacity, obviously, as well as some less activity due to just some hesitation probably from individuals, and whether or not they want to actually participate back into programs and things. We are seeing the increases, however, we're not yet recognizing full potential for this category. Amongst property taxes and others, UUT, we are holding very strong and steady on those. So Slide 15, this slide comes from HDL, who's our consultant for sales tax, as well as property tax. This gives you a little bit of an indication of what is going on between brick-and-mortar business, as well as online businesses. The chart, as I mentioned, was provided by HDL. This is statewide data throughout the state of California. And you can see how the bottom line there, the bluer, light blue line, that is online sales. That has been steadily increasing over the last 20 years. That's, this is sales tax generated from online sales. And at the same time, brick-and-mortar has gone up, comes down with the economic issues, and then slowly trends up. Towards the far right, obviously, that's the impact of the pandemic. You see online sales skyrocket, as well as brick-and-mortar drop because of closures. So there is impact here with our 1% Bradley Burns sales tax allocation. So it just depends on consumer habits, how this will trend out, and what we will see. As online sales grow, the participation, those sales go into what's considered the Los Angeles County pool, and all cities in the pool then share an allocation of that. So we don't get the full 1% of those sales, even if it's Glendale residents or businesses, and items are being delivered to their address in Glendale. However, if that same person walks into a store in Glendale and makes a purchase, that 1% does come directly to Glendale. So there is impact with online sales. So just again, as we see things come out of the pandemic, and as businesses open back up, we have yet to see what the consumer habits will be on this. And I should add that the online sales versus brick-and-mortar don't impact the Measure S local sales tax measure. That, the city receives the full allocation regardless. It does not go into the pool, because that is a local jurisdiction sales tax measure. Slide 16, this is our usual slide that we would show you, as far as all of our revenue categories, the large categories within the general fund, many line items behind each of these categories for different things. So there's obviously some changes here that you can see. We're showing you the revised 2021 budget, as well as the proposed budget for next year for each of these categories. The variances on the The variances on the, close to the far right of the slide, as well as the percentage differences. As you can see, property tax, sales tax, all doing well. We are looking at increases there. We are looking at the increase in our transient occupancy tax. So under occupancy and other taxes, in there is also the commercial refuse franchise fees that we will be collecting once those contracts are in place for next year. The revenues from other agencies shows the decrease of 2.5 million. That's because that's where the one-time CARES Act money was recorded this year. And then we do have, as I mentioned, small increases in our charges for services and the decreases in some of the other smaller categories. I should mention, this chart does not include ARPA funds, which is the stimulus money, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. So overall, our projected revenues are increasing by 10.6 million, or 4.8%. Okay, slide 17, we look at the proposed appropriations for the general fund. This is the first part of a couple of slides. These are our salaries and benefits categories in the general fund. Salaries, overtime, hourly wages, benefits, PERS, and our vacancy savings. So you can see where some of the increases are, and those primarily are under PERS of $3.9 million increase, benefits of 1.6, this includes our medical costs that are going up for the year. A little increase in hourly wages, which is due to facilities and things reopening that we can now have more programs offered again for our community. And then under salaries, we have almost $1.5 million increase. That increase is due directly to the MOU in place for our GPOA and police managers, as well as across all departments when staff are ready to do their, what they call step advancements to their range, so they aren't at the top of the range yet. And those advances come at their annual review as long as they have met the evaluation standards. So overall, our salaries and benefits are increasing by 7.3 million, or 3.9%.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I ask a question?
Yes.
Michelle, could you just go back to the last slide? I had a question there, I just wanted to see. So 4.8% is the projected increase in revenue year-over-year. If we, so if we pull out that CARES money that we're, we're not going to get this year that we got last year, that 2.5. So what is that, what happens to that 4.8%?
It goes up.
Where does that end up?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Brotman, that, so we would have to take it out of the revised number. So you'd, if we were going to pull out one-time money, basically, if that's what you're asking me, we would have to pull it out of the revised budget. So that would go down to 217.5 million. And then your increase would be basically,
Oh, okay.
Your increase would basically be the same. So we'd have to pull it out of the revised number.
Well, you'd pull it out of the revised, you'd get 17. But then the proposed budget would be still 230. Yeah, still 230.5, right?
Right. Yes, maybe I'm off on my math, sorry.
If we could, so it'll go up, I mean, it has to go up, right?
Yes, yes, I apologize, you're right.
So what would that be, 230.5 divided by 217?
Good morning, Councilmember Brotman, it would be around 6%.
Thank you, Agjaniyan.
It would go up to 6%.
6%, okay. Okay, so about 6, okay, so underlying revenue recovery, I guess you could say, about 6%. Okay, that's, I just wanted to get a sense of, what do we really think are, you know, are kind of, what's the bounce back looking like, really, right?
And part of that is recovery, part of it is not. In other words, sales tax, I mean, property tax. That is a natural assessed valuation change that goes up every year, not necessarily due to the pandemic.
That's right, okay, yeah, great, thank you, that cleared it up, thank.
Okay. Okay, any questions on salaries and benefits for next year? Okay. Slide 18, this is the remainder of the general fund proposed appropriations, maintenance and operation category. And these are some of the large categories within maintenance and operations. There's many others. We have contractual services is one of our largest categories, as well as our fleet rental charge, ISD for information services, technology charge, building and maintenance service charge as well, and then all other MNO. All other MNO includes a multitude of categories, office supplies, general supplies, travel, training, a bunch of other things that, you know, right now, off the top of my head, I'm not, it's not coming to me, but a lot of other smaller categories. So you can see the variance there from revised budget this year to proposed budget next year, almost $3.5 million increase, or about 7.5%. The, all the increases, the significant increases are in funding our internal service funds for fleet, ISD, as well as building and maintenance charge. Those funds require additional funding to be able to do what they do to service the vehicles, to purchase the vehicles in, that are attributable to the general fund, as well as provide the maintenance in the buildings and the facilities and the technology. So those, those funding sources come from the general fund as well as all other funds to help those operations. And so these are the increases that we're seeing in the general fund for those.
And I would submit to you that over the course of the year, the last at least couple of years, we have cut back and we have held back on purchase of new fleet and equipment, as well as maintaining some of our buildings and facilities that now for the next year, like Michelle mentioned, we need to ramp them up.
And then the last two categories under maintenance and op, I'm sorry, under the appropriations is capital outlay. For $118,000, we have a small budget there of 118. This is mainly for Glendale Police Department, some crime lab equipment that they're looking to purchase for next year, as well as our transfers out remains the same as this current year and that those transfers are $85,000 for nutritional meals that the general fund helps fund, as well as $1.5 million to help fund the debt service payment on the certificates of participation. And then we are showing the proposed budget for 2021 of $246,839,000, or an overall 3.9% increase when we factor in the 20% loan repayment. Any questions here? Okay. All right, slide 19, I'm going to touch a little bit on the American Rescue Plan funds, or what we call ARPA. So ARPA was signed into law by President Biden on March 11, 2021, guaranteeing direct financial relief for local governments. All local governments, counties across the country are receiving an allocation. Glendale's allocation will be $49.8 million. The funding will come to us in two installments. The latest information that I have is that we could be receiving the first installment within a few weeks, possibly sometime by mid-May. That's not official yet, we're not exactly sure, but that is the latest information I have. The second installment would come 12 months after that date of the first installment being received. Those funds will come to us direct from the US Treasury, and they must be spent by December 31 of 2024. Broadly, what those funds can be used for, because we don't have all the guidance yet, we just have these broad categories that were part of the act when it was signed. First being revenue replacement. So this is for lost revenue based on issues from the pandemic and the economic impacts of the pandemic. So looking at the general fund, we obviously have revenue loss since the pandemic has hit, and we will likely be seeing revenue loss going forward into, as you saw for next fiscal year, as well as some out-years from there. The other category broadly is infrastructure. And those, those projects right now, they've defined them as water, sewer, and broadband, or Wi-Fi, infrastructure projects. COVID assistance programs, similar to the programs that the city has provided through our Measure S funds. That's what these funds can be utilized for. And then the last category is hero pay for municipal employees up to $13 per hour. Those are the four broad categories. As we get more guidance, we will know more details. The spending will likely be part of an annual audit. I'm thinking, from what I'm hearing, it looks like possibly part of our annual financial audit or single audit that our external auditors do. But we still don't know all of that yet. So as we get more information, we will update council.
Question?
Yes.
Question?
Go ahead, Mr. Najarian.
So, Michelle, the mayor and I were approached by members of a particular industry not too many days ago and requested, inquired whether any of this ARPA funds could be allocated to their particular enterprise to replace their revenue, which they have lost during this pandemic. Are those funds fungible as such?
Madam-
Transferable as such to give to a particular enterprise to replace their lost revenue because of the pandemic?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Najarian, I'm not sure. I know that there are ways to partner, to provide funding, but I haven't, I don't know specifically. So I'm going to have to look into that for you. And then as I get more information and when the guidance comes out, we probably will know more, but I will look into that.
Yeah, I'm sorry I'm being a little bit vague, but I don't want to, I don't want to name any particular, the other party that we were speaking to, just if there's any-
Right, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, I have been in contact with a certain entity, and I have a meeting scheduled with them. But Michelle and her staff are doing the research, as she mentioned. It may be more than likely under the broad category of COVID assistance program, but we need to find out more details about it.
Okay, thank you, I will wait for the answers.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Ms. Brotman.
Yeah, Michelle, can you explain how we calculate revenue shortfall for the revenue replacement category?
Sure, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Brotman. So my understanding from, from the ARPA guidance that we have so far, which again is pretty broad, is utilizing the year for your agency, the year, the full year prior to any pandemic months. So for Glendale, because we have a June 30 fiscal year-end, for us, that means fiscal year ending June 30 of 2019. So fiscal year 1819 is our full year pre-pandemic months, because we had some months in 1920. So we look at the revenues that, all the categories of revenues for fiscal year 1819, and then we then compare against the following years that we had pandemic issues. So 1920, this current fiscal year, looking at next year, and possibly even out to the future. We've done that calculation comparing 1920, 2021 projections, as well as proposed budget for 2122, looking at the base year of 1819. That total is a little over $33 million. Just for the general fund, we haven't done that. There is impact, obviously, in Measure S. There's impact across the city in different funds. Parking fund, probably within GWP for their collections, and probably some others as well.
Okay, so, okay, let me, so you're saying 33 million is the total that we could potentially apply to our, just, I guess, just our general fund, just to cover any, any gaps that we have, like we're expecting to have this coming year, right?
That's our best estimate as of right now, yes.
Okay, and then that will go up, but you, when are you going to do that calculation? I mean, when are you going to know how much of that, close to 50 million that we get, would be kind of available for us to just fill those shortfalls?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Brotman, as soon as we get the official guidance, we'll know more exactly of how we can utilize those funds and be more specific in that. Right now, we know the broad category of lost revenue. We know that we need to measure against the base year of fiscal year 1819, and that's generally about all we have at this point. So we're waiting for that official guidance to be able to have the better definition because we do know that this will likely be subject to some sort of review or audit down the road, and we don't want to risk losing those funds or not utilizing them as according to the guidance. So once we have all the definitions of that, and you'll see in the upcoming slides what we're proposing, how to utilize some of it to fill the gap in the general fund for lost revenue. And that's pretty much what we're anticipating is one of the, if you will, more safest categories to be able to utilize these funds and most needed to balance out the budget.
Okay.
And Michelle, can I ask a question, please? This 33 million that you're talking about, is that over the three-year period until the 2024? Or is that just for one year?
Mayor Devine, that amount is for fiscal year 1920, our projections for this current fiscal year of 2021, and next year, 2122. So it's basically two full years plus the first few months of the pandemic, and only general fund.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, slide 20. This is our general fund proposed budget summary. We have our revenues of $230,804,000. The loan repayment that is going, that is coming in, this is the final one, some use of economic development fund balance. And then this is where we're putting in $14 million of the ARPA funds to help balance the budget for next year. So our resources and appropriations will match, and we will hopefully not have a use of fund balance in next year's budget if we do this. Slide 21 gives you the projection for the fund balance, which won't change. The dollar amount stays the same. The only reason our reserve percentage changes is because we have to divide the number now by a higher appropriation amount for the current, for the next fiscal year. So it goes to 32.2%. And then on slide 22, you see it in the same type of chart with the target of 35, the floor of 25, still well within council policy. Slide 23 provides council with the general fund five-year forecast. The first column on the far left is our projected fiscal year 2021 numbers, which is what we reviewed at the earlier part of this presentation, where you see the change to fund balance of the negative 1.7 million. And then our proposed fiscal year 2122 budget that we just covered, utilizing the $14 million of ARPA funds and then balancing the year. Otherwise, we would be seeing a $14 million deficit in next year's budget. We've also included for the out-year for fiscal year 2223, an additional $17.1 million use of ARPA funds again for lost revenue to help balance out the budget in the out-years. And as council knows, this forecast changes. This is what we know now, and it's our best guess on our revenue sources, as well as certain assumptions in our appropriations. And we do provide council a balanced budget as we can every year when we come to you, or a plan to help ease whatever deficit we might be looking at. I will definitely pause here because I'm sure I'll have some- I will definitely pause here, because I'm sure I'll have some questions.
Yeah, I have a question.
Brodmann?
Yeah, can you just help us with those three out-years? How do we think about those numbers, that minus 17 and minus 22.3?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Brodmann, so the spike in the final year is because right now, it's, we're, there's projections that the landfill is going to be closing by then. There are some revenue sources in the general fund that causes those to go away, maybe replaced with something down the road, but we aren't sure yet, so that's where you see some changes, some changes there. Those are large deficits.
Sorry, interrupt there, and the closure of landfill is predicated on maintaining the same tonnage that's being deposited there today, as well as maintaining the waste shed that we currently have in place. So it's not a set in stone date of closure as of today, we are looking at some options in the future.
So those are definitely large deficits, there is a bit of a, you know, our revenues don't increase as quickly as our appropriations do. This is something we've been seeing for a while, and it's part of the reason council decided to set up our Section 115 trust to help fund our pension costs going forward, and these are things that we can draw on if we need to, or utilize other tools that we can hopefully develop internally, perhaps through the pension committee, or some other resources that we have.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, one other question with those ARPA funds, again, you said they have to be spent by the end of which fiscal year?
December 31, 2024.
2024, okay. Okay. So we could hold on to some, I mean, if we, if we wanted, we could hold on to some for the 2324 fiscal year planning?
Yes, as long, Councilmember Brodmann, as long as, you know, whatever we're planning to utilize those funds for meets the requirements, then, then yes. I mean, we have incorporated about $31 million here of that nearly 50 million for lost revenue, because we have some projections that show that we can support those numbers. Outside of that, it's going to have to be, you know, council's direction, and some, and once we get the guidance, we'll know more on how to utilize those funds.
And again, it needs to be-
Utilizing, what's that?
I was going to add that, again, it needs to be spent by December 2024, not appropriated.
Correct.
Right.
So you don't want to start a large project, basically, that you won't have those funding, that funding spent?
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Okay, the next section of our presentation this morning is talking about some minor changes to our citywide fee schedule. Slide 25 is just a reminder for council on fee versus tax. Some examples here, on the first column, like if it's a user fee, full user fee, where it's 100% private benefit, something similar to like a building permit, that will, the user fee will cover the cost of the service that's provided for that, for that activity. Anything that has some public benefit or some private benefit will have some tax subsidy in there. Examples there would be youth programs or historic preservation, and then 100% public benefits, such as something for police, would be funded via tax. So no fees would be charged there. Slide 26, you can see the various categories for our proposed fee changes for next year. We have 2,342 fees within the citywide fee schedule, and there are a handful of changes that are happening here with a revenue impact of about $134,000. Most of that is in the general fund. We have no changes to 1,673 fees, and seven fees are being deleted for redundancy or just changing how they're utilized. CPI adjustments were incorporated on 659 fees, and that CPI adjustment was 0.87%, so just under 1% increase. That amounts to $71,823, of which general fund gets about 48,000, a little over $48,000. And then there's three new fees that are being proposed, all impacting the general fund to the tune of about $62,400 in total, as, that's the estimate. And we'll go through these in a little bit more detail. The departments are here to be able to provide some background if council needs that. Proposed deletions on Slide 27, we have two police fees for filming and special events that are being deleted, because you'll see on the addition, these are being blended to a new rate, so these two are coming out. Historic Preservation Commission Review of Single Family Dwelling Modification or Demolition is also being taken out, and Historic Preservation Commission, also the same type of thing for other than single-family dwelling, is also coming out. I believe these are redundant fees. Slide 28, a few more deletions, these are the last three, on, for fire miscellaneous fees, residential care facilities, the permit to operate or maintain a large family daycare includes periodic inspection, and then fire life safety annual inspections, not otherwise covered. So these are all redundant or out-of-date fees that are being deleted. Any questions on these? Okay. Slide 29, these are the proposed new fees, this is the combination that I just mentioned for the police personnel for filming or special events. It's an hourly cost to provide police staffing to monitor activities at special events or any filming detail sites, that's $147 per hour. The Glendale Transportation Center Bike Locker Rental Deposit Fee, this is for individuals to be able to rent a locker at the transportation center for storing bikes or anything else. This is a deposit of $50 per key. And then Glendale Transportation Demand Model Run Services, as needed, transportation model runs, demand model runs for proposed developments in the city, this is community development fee, $4,160 per model run.
I have a question, Michelle, on this one.
Sure.
On the bike locker rental deposit fee, that $50 and the locker, is that good for any number of days, or is it, you know, in perpetuity, or how is that, it's not per day, I'm sure, is it?
Mayor Devine, I believe it's a deposit in case the key is lost, and then Public Works has to try to get into it, and they can't. So it's basically a deposit that we keep, and then if they surrender the locker and don't want to utilize it anymore, we would refund the deposit.
Exactly.
Right, as long as we get the key back.
Gotcha, okay, but they can, but they can keep the locker for as long as they want?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. All right, as we wrap up, this is a look at your budget calendar. We just went through our first study session this morning, and we have several more. Next Tuesday, we will be having our Measure S discussion, Tuesday, May 4, at 9:00 AM. On Thursday, May 6, at 1:00 PM in the afternoon, we will have our first of our departmental presentations with city clerk, city attorney, community services, and parks, as well as human resources. Tuesday, May 11, is Budget Study Session Number Four at 9:00 AM, more departmental presentations, including library, arts, and culture, Glendale Water and Power, as well as the police department. On Thursday, May 13, Budget Study Session Number Five, 9:00 AM, departmental presentations from Information Services, Community Development, as well as Public Works. Tuesday, May 18, our Budget Study Session Number Six, at 6:00 at 9:00 AM, departmental presentations from the city treasurer, administrative services, finance, city manager, innovation, performance, and audit, as well as the fire department. And then our last study session is on May 20, at 9:00 AM, and this will be a recap of the citywide budget, and then any follow-up items that may come up between now and the last study session. June 8 is our target for our budget hearing, as well as adoption at the council meeting that night at 6:00 PM. Any questions on the calendar?
I have a question, not on the calendar, though. Michelle, it was back in our revenues discussion, when we were looking out five years, and there was a larger deficit, I guess it was the five-year forecast, and one of the items you mentioned was the closure of Shoal Canyon landfill. And, just, just so I understand, that that is only reflecting the loss of tipping fees, et cetera, that the city gains? Correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Najarian, yes, we have tipping fee as well as host fee that is collected at the landfill.
Okay, but it doesn't, I mean, the implication is not that that's the only additional impact, because our residents may have an additional higher refuse fee, because we're not using Shoal anymore, we're going to have to ship it out or do whatever we need to do with it. Is that, is that correct?
That is not part of this forecast, that is, this is only showing the general fund, anything like that would probably be out of the refuse fund.
And, Madam Mayor, Member City Council, Councilmember Najarian, as you know, we also have the cost implication of the post-closure maintenance, and whatever the city council will decide ultimately to do after the landfills closed with the remaining site. Those are the details that I am working out with staff currently, and as I mentioned earlier, that closure date is predicated upon maintaining the same level of, the tonnage of deposit that can be made at the landfill, as well as the keeping the current waste shed that is in place that could potentially be changed and have an impact on the closure date.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to get into a discussion on the waste issue, but there's an impact to the city budget, as well as a potential impact to the individual's budget with the closure of-
Yes, sir.
And we'll, I mean, I know that's a big story, that's a big discussion as to, you know, are we going to recycle, are we going to cut our waste stream, et cetera, but just, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, just to let you know-
Are there any other questions?
Mayor, just to let you know, I do have a caller on this item.
Okay, if we have no other questions from council at this moment, let's listen to the caller.
Herbert, Herbert Milano, you're live, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Mayor Devine, Members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Milano. I just want to state that I have been watching this budget session now for close to 20 years, and it seems like the pattern has been pretty much the same, this presentation concerning the general fund. And what I also find is that we don't get a multi-year level trend at the very top level. As a resident, I like to see numbers that are, let's say, greater than 5%, so that the council and the residents can see the top-level view of what the trends are in these expenses. And when I see a lot of time being spent on items of just a few thousand dollars, it just doesn't seem that we're getting an appropriate evaluation of the budget in that manner. I have questions with regard to Slide 17, with regard to the section on salaries and benefits. And the question that I have, if the council will allow me to ask it, and perhaps forward it, is how many full-time equivalent employees do we have this year vis-a-vis prior years? So that it makes the salary increases, you know, relevant with regard to that number of employees, so full-time employees? The second is that we have a significant number of, with regard to the increase in the pension obligation, an increase of 8.4%. And on Slide 23, you see the ever-increasing amount continuing on to the future. At the end of the day, that's going to have an impact on your expenditures for the residents' quality of life. And I would like to see the city council address, how do these additional expenditures that benefit a fairly narrow number of employees primarily, impact our ability to be able to maintain parkland, roads, all the basic infrastructure? Because it seems to me that if these ARPA funds are there to cover, you know, a potential shortfall, it seems that the ARPA funds in the future are going to pay the pensions. It does, I know it replaces revenue, but it does seem to be quite odd that where the needs are, where the residents have had a lower income, lost job, that we see a steady increase in salaries and pensions. And I think the council should probably address that in the future, or in future study sessions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Milano. Any comments, questions? Okay, I guess that concludes our first budget session study, and thank you to the budget team, Michelle Flynn, and all of the staff that helped put this together, we appreciate all of your hard work. And with that, I think we're ready for adjournment. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second, we are adjourned at 10:15. Thank you all very much.